Okay, good morning. It is Wednesday, the 25th of March. I want to welcome you to a special meeting of the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. It's a special meeting, so we will not have general public comment, but we will have comment on the individual items. Okay, so I'd like to, Madam Clerk, hold number one, because I want to have a conversation about that. I do have some cards on some of the other items, so why don't you read item? We'll just go through them quickly. Read item two, and then I will call up the speaker on item two. All speakers will be given one minute today.
Thank you. And item number two is a resolution and a CLA report relative to establishing support for SB 128, the End of Life Option Act.
Okay, thank you. On that card, I mean, on that item, I have Mr. Herman. Sergeant, Sergeant, could you move that middle chair so I can watch the time?
It's only one minute, Mr. Speaker. Don't worry, it goes by quick.
Just speak on the subject.
It's very unconstitutional to learn that for one minute, under item two, we're going to delegate and support SB 126, the End Life Option Act, which sets a priority that today the City of Los Angeles has the adverse effect of insulting and killing people in the City of Los Angeles. This is not a prescription. The prescription for lethal medication while protecting doctors from civil and criminal liability? Doctors should be liable for killing people, because if you want to kill Armando Herman, here I am. Inject me, stick it up whatever in, and see if I die, because I'm not gonna die. I don't believe that any doctor should not have the same consequences of being liable for the liability of death for over-intoxicating people like Jose Weezer.
Mr. City Attorney, I may ask you to clarify that. I didn't understand anything. No.
I don't think it's possible.
I understand. Okay. Members, do we have any questions or concerns? This primarily is effort to support a resolution or a piece of legislation that's going on in Sacramento. It's a very emotional issue. If, if, but, you know, but I think it's one we want to bring to the council floor for a conversation. So did anybody want to speak on it, or can we just?
I just wanted to say, Mr. President, on the chair, on this, it's a very deep issue, and there should be a lot of comment, and right decision should be made for the, for this. So, thank you.
Okay, so why don't, on this item, and then I'll figure out when we will actually schedule it for council, but why don't we adopt the CLA report and the revised resolution, so without objection, that'll be the order? Can we go on to item? In fact, I don't have cards on item three. Why don't we just take care, if you could read item three, and we'll deal with that?
And item three is a resolution and a CLA report establishing support for AB 428, which would establish a tax credit for individuals to make seismic retrofittes to their buildings.
Okay, you know what? We also don't have cards on item five. Can we do that one as well? But there, no, please don't disrupt the meeting, and I don't have a card. We'll, we'll just act on the, the item that you already read. That's?
Item number three.
Item three. So, without objection, members, we will adopt the CLA report and the resolution on this one as well. That, so without objection, that'll be the order. This brings us to item four. If you could please read item four.
And item four is a resolution and a CLA report establishing support for AB 96, which would prohibit the sale of ivory and rhinoceros horn in California.
Okay, I have cards on that item. Why don't we start with a Godfrey Harris and a Tom Brown? Please come forward. No applause, Mr. Herman. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Godfrey Harris. I'm the managing director of the Ivory Education Institute, and although I've submitted a full statement to the committee, let me just say that if California were to ban the sale and movement of ivory objects, it would only increase the danger to elephants. Why? Basic economics. If you squeeze supply and do nothing about demand, which is AB 96's purpose, you raise the price of ivory, you increase the incentives to poachers, and you endanger elephants more. States like Washington, Virginia, Maryland, and Iowa have already rejected AB 96 equivalents. California should do the same. Los Angeles, one of the great cultural centers of the world, should not be in the business of doing what the--
Finish your sentence.
Thank you, sir. Should not be in the business of doing what the Taliban did in Baniram, Afghanistan, or what ISIS did--
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Brown. I'm here on behalf of the 96 Elephants Campaign. I'd like to call to mind that 96 elephants are being killed each day in Africa, poached and killed for their ivory. It comes out to 35,000 elephants a year. At this rate, they will be extinct within the next decade if we do not take action now. L.A. is the second-largest ivory market in the U.S. At the current, under current state law, 90% of the ivory for sale in L.A. is considered illegal. Something must be done. AB 96 would effectively eradicate that, making all of that ivory effectively illegal. Please support AB 96. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Herman?
So, we all know that such rejects did not listen to the first speaker on the basic concern of basic economics, raising the danger to the extinction of our most welcome guests in the plains, the rhinoceros. But yet, the sales of money is the greed of every politician. So, AB 96, Ms. Atkins from San Diego, you should do more for the homeless people, as you said with Eric Garcetti, our mayor, although that is irrelevant and off-topic, as I direct myself back to the subject. So, the best idea, the only idea, is to know that the names of this resolution, Krikorian and--
Stay on the subject.
I'm talking about animals, sir, including the city for 2015-2016 State Legislative Program Support for AB 96, Ms. Atkins.
Your time is up. Thank you. Okay, members, on this item, item four, I recommend that we move this to council, so I recommend we adopt the CLA report and the resolution, and unless someone wants to speak on that, that'll be the order. Okay? That brings us where? To item five?
Correct. And item five is a resolution and a CLA report establishing support for the confirmation of the U.S. Senate of Diane Rodriguez to the National Council on the Arts.
Okay, Mr. Herman.
I'll save my time. Can I have my time of one minute, please?
You'll have your time.
One minute, please? Is that such a demand unconstitutional? So, the point by Mr. Bloomfield, the chief legislative analyst, to report relative to the 2015-2016 federal legislation program support of the confirmation of Diane Rodriguez to the National Council of Arts. We spend millions of dollars on art in the City of Los Angeles at the waste of all its taxpayers under bonds, bonos, boners, whatever you call those things, bonds, James Bond, those bonds, and for what? They're eyesores when they're tagged with graffiti. So, I really hope that the decision for U.S. Senate Diane Rodriguez to the National Council of Arts really looks into and investigates the problem here with eyesores of blight throughout our communities, especially in Jose Weezer's--
You're really not on the topic. I'm gonna let you hear your last second. You are again trying to disrupt the committee here, and I wish you would stop doing that, Mr. Herman. Okay, on this item, without objection, Mr. Labadez.
I wanted to support Mr. Sadio on this. This is a great Echo Park resident. Art is extremely important to all of Los Angeles, and not only from our spiritual sense, our humanity sense, but also economically, it's a driving force. So, I want to thank Mr. Sadio for bringing this forward.
I concur with that. So, it's the recommendation of the chair that on this item, we, we adopt the CLA report and a resolution. So, without objection, that'll be the order. That brings us now to item one. If you would read that, and if we have a rep from the CLA's office, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
And item number one is a resolution to honor the memory of Rick Orloff by having his name as the first to be inscribed in the L.A. City Council Memorial Media Center.
Okay, so, we have with us at the center table the bringer of doom, Avak. Okay. What I wanted to ask you is, explain to me, the, I mean, technically, the media room has already been named. What is it, and when did that occur?
Yes. And I believe in 1989, the media room, what we, what we normally call the press room only, was named the Memorial Media Center, and the city received donations from media organizations to help refurbish the room, and there's a plaque. It's dedicated to all those reporters who have given their lives to keep the people of Los Angeles informed, and it's called the Memorial Media Center, and it's also listed in Council Rule 92, which explains how the room is to be used.
Okay, so we would, we would not want to alter at all the use of the room.
Correct.
And the only thing that this motion would do would be to add at the beginning of the memorial--
The memorial--
The memorial media--
Media Center. Or, or the way the resolution is written, we would simply add a plaque under the existing plaque that's, has Rick Orloff's name and perhaps a, you know, a little phrase or something. That, that was the idea.
Okay, well, I think what I'd like to do, members, you know, in my opinion, I'll call on you, Mr. Labadez, you know, times are changing, the media is changing. I don't know if they will ever, you know, I remember the day when they, so many of the media were like Rick Orloff. I mean, where we had individuals, the closest thing we have to that is Dimitrio, who's been around a long time. I don't think there'll ever be another Rick Orloff, so I think that it would be appropriate for us to just take his name and put it in front of the current name of the media, the Memorial Media Center, and then we will come up with a design of some plaque and have it posted there. So, that's where I am, because I really think he's kind of like the last of the last, and if anyone deserves it, it would be him. Mr. Labadez?
I agree with you more, and I just took a look. It was December 7, 1989. It was dedicated. It doesn't mention any media members by name. They're listed, listed as the late, great John Ferraro and others there. I would just ask if maybe you could ask our very fine Assistant Chief Legislative Analyst, Mr. Cattellian, is that correct? Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yes, sir.
To review that, and possibly, as, as, in my hearing, it would be the Rick Orloff Memorial Media Center.
Yes.
Or Room, Media Room.
No, I think--
Or Press Room.
Media Center. Well, it would be the Rick Orloff Memorial Media Center.
How about Press Room? He's in the press. Why don't you just--
But you know what, Mr. Labadez? The reason why I don't want to do that is because Mr. Ferraro, Mr. Holden, some of our former bosses--
Got it, okay.
Came up with that. I don't think that they would be bothered at all if we just were to add his name to the beginning of this center that they created.
Got it. Okay, good. All right, I, that's what I said earlier about you, Mr. President. You do have a smart thought on that. So, Mr. Cattellian, if you would, take my comments, note them, and file them, as you always do.
Yes, sir. So, you know, I, I can remember when this motion was introduced, every member of this council fought to be on the motion. We just could not have everyone on it. So, I know from a personal perspective how important this is for each and every member of this council. So, Mr. Weezer, did you want to?
I support this, Mr. President. I think Mr. Orloff was a solid human being who, whenever he'd stop you by the chambers and ask you if you had a second, it went longer than a second, but you always knew you'd get a fair shake at the end. So, I, I think this is worthy of memorializing Mr. Orloff's times spent here in the City Council and his coverage of city affairs, so I wholeheartedly support this.
And thank you. And once we pass this, then I'll have conversations with folk from the media, and maybe we can begin to come up with a ceremony for that very purpose. Yeah, so, on item one, we will adopt the resolution.
As amended--
As amended.
To reflect that it will be called the Rick Orloff Memorial Media Center.
That's why we have you at the front table, to make sure we stay on the straight and narrow. Thank you, Avak. Thank you, Mr. Labadez.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, there was nobody like Rick Orloff, and his dedication of service to his paper, The Los Angeles Daily News, and Los Angeles, and his door was always open. His door was always open in the media row, which was a great thing, because you could walk in and say hello and touch base and et cetera. So, this is a great honor for him as well.
Now, he's really a good guy. You and I kind of grew up with him--
Right.
--in this, in this city hall of ours. So, anyway, with that said, that'll be the order. Is there any other business before this? Mr. Labadez?
Fourth, we thought, number three, the earthquake, because you don't know when it's coming, so we can't hold any time back on that one.
Thank you, sir. Okay--
That item is in council this morning.
Okay.
You're so good, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, we, we, we coordinated it that way, Mr. Labadez. Okay, so with that said, is there any more business before this committee?
That completes all--
Okay, this committee's adjourned. Thank you, members. See you in 12 minutes. See you in 12 minutes.